Okay, this is the Village of Peetown Board Meeting for October 8th, 2012. We'll begin by standing and reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Reichert.
Here.
Mr. Huffke.
Here.
Mr. Wicker.
Here.
Mr. Callahan.
Here.
Mr. Forsythe. Mr. Libitor.
Okay, that's the record show that we do have a forum present, we can conduct official business. The first order of official business is the review of the September 24th, 2012 regular Village Board meeting minutes. And trustees, I will entertain a motion to adopt the minutes as presented, or if you notice something that needs corrections, please let us know.
I make a motion we approve the minutes of September 24th, 2012.
Okay, motion by trustee Riker.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Wicker to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2012. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Present.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
You need me.
I need, and President Director.
Yes, I approve. Minutes approved as presented. The next item on the agenda is accounts payable and payroll. You, trustees, you have in your packet the payroll for the pay period ending September 29th, 2012 totaling $44,035.33. You also have, under accounts payable, bills in the general fund totaling $54,472.39. In the water and sewer fund, there are bills totaling $31,468.87. The total for those two categories of bills is $85,941.26. We'll entertain a motion to pay the bills.
I make a motion we pay the bills.
Motion by trustee Wicker.
Second.
Seconded by trustee Riker to pay the bills as presented. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes. Motion passes, bills will be paid. Next item on the agenda is public comment and/or any, or questions for any non-agenda item. In other words, if you're on the agenda later, just wait until that item comes up. Anybody for a non-agenda item? Hearing done, we'll move on with the agenda. Reports of committees, police chief report. Chief?
Really nothing to report, just reminder that Wednesday at 6:00, we'll have a police committee meeting, anticipated being very long.
Trustees, any questions of the chief? Hearing done. The next item is the engineer's report, and the engineer is not here this evening, so there is no report. I'm going to move something up on the agenda in order to help our auditor get to the next meeting they have to attend tonight over in Beecher. So, what we, we have Russia Kolberg from the auditing firm of Smith, Kelly, Dykstra, and Ohm, who will go over the annual financial audit with us.
Okay, thank you for letting me speak a little bit early here. I do get to go over to Beecher tonight also, so I want to thank the village and all of the employees that help us with the audit. We know that when we come in, we disrupt your daily routine that you normally have and help us tremendously get the audit done, so we do appreciate that help. Just want to take about five minutes or so and go through the audit with you. You should have received the books, the blue books that we normally hand out, and I just wanted to cover a few things in there. The auditor's report is presented on pages one and two. It is a standard unqualified report, which is the best kind of report that you can get from us, so that is not varied in all the years that we've been doing the audit for you, so it's good to continue with that. Pages three through 10 is what is called the management discussion and analysis section. George and Diane put a lot of those numbers and scenarios together. I would let you read that on your own. It does give some history this year, last year, and tries to predict a little bit of the future in the last page of that. Just gives the reader some idea of what is happening in the current fiscal year that you're in that may affect numbers for next year. On exhibit A, on page 11, just wanted to touch on a few things there. Your total assets in your governmental activities were down about $258,000 compared to last year. 150 of that is depreciation and some various things going on in your capital assets, so nothing to be concerned about there. You actually do, did have a small increase in the real estate taxes that are receivable, so it's good to see that, that number come up just slightly, not terribly, but at least leveling out and starting to come up somewhat. Your total liabilities, on the other hand, what you owe to other people, was down about $175,000. Now, 204 of that was the drawdown on the letter of credit that you had. You use that for some of the improvements at Myers Glen.
Mm-hmm.
Was it subdivision?
Yes.
So, that is a liability that is out there. You've collected that money to pay down on those things that need to be done yet in that subdivision. Of your net assets in your governmental funds, the total net assets was 5.2 million. 3.3 or almost 3.4 of that is your capital assets less your debt. Just want to point out that you had unrestricted net assets of about $930,000, and you have restricted net assets of about the same, a little bit more. The motorfield tax money is restricted. You have some capital improvement money that's restricted, and then some other for IMRF and a few things like that that is restricted. Your business type activities will go over on a few pages back here, so want to touch base on that, and then on the next page on exhibit B. This exhibit basically tells you what functions the village provides. It's the various, the general government, public safety, et cetera, what those activities cost the village after people have paid for some charges for services, some grants that you receive, pay their water, sewer bills, that type of thing. Just wanted to point out a few things here. Essentially, your governmental activities, the general government expenses, the net, which is about a little more than halfway over there, the net expense to the village was $70,000, meaning after paying the expenses with the charges, you still had a cost of $70,000 that had to come from property taxes. That number was down from $180,000 cost last year essentially because of the village vehicle sticker. You collected about $110,000, so that's a difference every other year you see that bounce there. The public safety expenses were up over last year about 3%, which is essentially a cost of inflation, and the same with the public works, was up about 3%. On the other hand, your cost of the water, sewer, and garbage funds, they were down in total. Water was down, sewer was down. Your garbage cost was up a little bit compared to last year. Last year, the garbage actually had a $17,000 profit. This year, it was essentially break even. The bottom section there is what is coming in from property taxes, state taxes, the sales taxes, et cetera. One nice thing to see was the sales tax and income tax was up about $37,000 compared to last year, and your business type activities were essentially the same as what they were last year in that section. Exhibit E, which is on page 15, just want to show that to you. It breaks out the governmental, what I call governmental activities. It's a general fund, capital improvements, your motorfield tax. Nice to see the general fund had a net income, if you want to call it that, of $132,000. So, not spending everything that you've got coming in, but not making lots and lots of money, which is, you know, a good place to be with considering that it's taxpayers and that that are footing the bills here, so. Exhibit J and K are your police pension fund, back on 20 and 21. And just wanted to touch base there one moment. Your, on page 21, it shows the change at the bottom, the change in net assets. You had an increase in that fund of $101,000. You'll see in a footnote in just a minute that your percent that you have funded is going up slightly, which is good to see also. On page 29, back into the footnotes, note four breaks out your long-term debt. It's something that you need to keep in mind. You do have these funds, you know, the liabilities out there that do come from property taxes and some of your general revenues to pay those things, so I'd just like to point that out to keep that in mind. Sometimes boards tend to forget that because it's set possibly before some of you were sitting on the boards, those things came up. Page 35 is the funding for your retirement funds, both IMRF and your pension, police pension. The third column from the right, the funded ratio, it's good to see in both cases those trends are going up. You're about, almost 90% funded in IMRF and 31% funded for your police pension. Those numbers, the funding ratio, helps drive how much you have to be paying into those retirement plans and how quickly. So, as those ratios climb, that liability that you're going to have to pay each year hopefully will slide down a little bit depending on retirements and things like that, so. It says police pension is not, is only the 31% funded, but it is coming up, so that is a good trend also. And then back on 46 and 47 is the breakdown between water, sewer, and garbage of your fees that you've collected, and then the total expenses there. Again, overall, slightly better than last year. The next page, 47, shows the expenses for the three, and not, not too much different from last year in those three. So, that is all that I wanted to say tonight, and just cover it briefly. I know you guys have had this for a little bit. Do anybody, any of you have questions that I can attempt to answer or look into for you?
Trustee, for me.
Okay. If not, if you've got questions later, phone number's there, or Diane, Donna, Marcy can get you in touch with us. Again, I want to thank you guys. I know it's not the most convenient to have three of us in here, you know, tromping around, pulling things out, and then calling and asking for things later, so we appreciate the help.
Thank you, Marcy.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, I'm going to go back to the regular agenda, and underneath the, we skip the old business, the impound fee ordinance. Let's take that up now.
Chief Morris conducted some additional research on this topic. He's had conversations with two local attorneys, and it appears that they may be willing to serve as the hearing officer. The appointment of one of these attorneys as hearing officer would avoid even the appearance of a conflict of interest that might result from the village prosecutor also serving as the impoundment hearing officer. Today, the only changes of the proposed ordinance are reducing the fee from $500, the proposed fee from $500 proposed to $300, including some typographical errors to indicate that all of the hearings are administrative hearings. We had, we had two or three calling names for them throughout the ordinance, so they've been corrected, proper term. We're here for board input.
Trustees, basically, I think what, what's happened is the discussion that we had last time is being incorporated into the proposed ordinance, also keeping in mind the fact that much of what is in there is required by state statute. So, if we don't have any additional comments from trustees, then we'll move forward to make this the official item on the agenda at the next meeting. So, by a consensus, I'm assuming that's what we're going to do.
Yeah, if I could, I just want to throw two things out there just when I was looking into it. It's noteworthy. It's not necessarily relevant right now, but it's noteworthy.
Okay.
The review I did indicates that any hearings we do have must be recorded, so I wanted to at least point that out. This statute is.
Now, does that mean they go to record or just, or just audiotape?
Well, it simply says shall be recorded. It doesn't define precisely what that means, but it might be worth looking into. And also, that same, that same section, it does allow for an internal administrative review if we chose to go that route. So, beyond the hearing, we could have our own internal review of the hearing process if we chose to. I'm not saying we'd want to, I'm just simply saying it's an option, so I just wanted to throw that out there and let you guys know what I came across.
We will then bring this back at the next meeting for an official action then. Next item on the agenda, we have a number of Girl Scouts here for three specific requests, which are going to require three specific motions. So, the first one is on the fall product sales, candy nuts and magazines from October 5th through 21 of this year.
Yes, for us.
And we have with us whom?
Sophie Stack.
Say that again, please.
Sophie Stack.
Sophie Stack?
And her mom, Sharon Stack.
Thank you. So, what would you like to tell us about that?
Well, fall product sales is our startup funds for our troops, especially our new troops. This is our new Girl Scout calendar year, 2012, 2013. Girl Scouts is starting a new century, so we're looking for permission to go door-to-door in the village limits for fall product sales. It's candy, nuts, and magazines. Again, it would run the 5th through the, you know, through the 21st. We realize it's the 8th, and we've held our girls off, so if the village granted permission, you would see Girl Scouts, I would imagine, out tomorrow looking for sales.
Okay. And this is evenings and Saturdays, I'm assuming?
Yes. It would be evenings and Saturdays. I would imagine it wouldn't be anything past 7 o'clock.
Wouldn't think, and the girls are going out probably with a parent.
With a parent, most definitely.
Trustees, any questions?
Yeah.
Hearing done, I'll entertain a motion to approve the Girl Scout Service Unit 714 fall product sales to begin Oc- we'll make it officially October 8th and run through the 21st. Clerk, please. Oh, motion?
Second.
Second by trustee Riker. Second by trustee Wicker. I'm getting ahead on this. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Motion passed. That one is officially approved.
Thank you.
Do we have somebody else with the other one?
Okay.
All right, I didn't know whether.
I'm glad to talk about all of them.
Okay.
The second item on the list is our partnership with Helping Hands. We collect food for the Helping Hands food pantry. Last year, we started dropping off bags a week before. We actually do food pickup, and we found that that has increased our volume of food that we've picked up, so we are asking permission to drop off paper bags with driver information the week before, which would be October 20th through the 21st. And then on October 27th, one week later, we would be back going door-to-door to pick those bags up and any additional food that people would want to donate to the food pantry.
Okay. Trustees, I have a motion to grant that request.
I make a motion we grant that request.
Okay, motion by trustee Wicker, seconded by.
Second.
Riker to approve the Girl Scouts Helping Hands annual food drive to take place twice. Bag drop-off, October 20 and 21, and the pickup on October 27. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Okay, that motion passes. And everybody's.
Could you please make sure the village hall gets a couple of bags?
Absolutely. We'll be around to check on that fall product sale, too.
Good salesperson. Next item is everybody's favorite, Girl Scout cookie sales.
Yes, that is our biggest fundraising event. Sales will run January 5th through the 25th. Those are our initial sales. We do carry our sales into March 24th. However, most of those sales at that time are booth sales, and so you would see us at local businesses. We don't really need your permission for that as long as we have the business approval. So, we're looking for more door-to-door on the 5th through the 25th of January, and that would be, of course, 2013.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the Girl Scout Cookie Sales Day.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, motion by trustee Riker, seconded by trustee Wicker to approve the Girl Scouts Cookie Sales Day officially from January 5th through 25th with assorted other booths and other things taking place up to March 24th. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
That one is also officially approved. Good luck with all your fundraising events.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. And we know we're going to wind up buying a lot of cookies.
We'll be back for next year.
Next item on the agenda is the Carly Stack American Foundation of Suicide Prevention Walk. That would be 4/27/13. They're really getting a jump on this. Hi, you are?
I'm Carly Stack, the daughter of Sharon Stack.
I was going to ask if there was a connection. Yes. Carly.
I am working with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention on another walk for the village. As many as you know, I had my first walk last year, and I'm already planning for next year's because I planned a little bit late last year. I was a little bit hectic. Last year, we raised over 13 grand for the cause, and it was a very emotional time, especially with what has happened into the community. And I was considering this year, taking a walk through the village to bring awareness to other people who aren't involved in the walk. We would start at the junior high and circle around the village. It would only take us about a half hour, and I'm asking the village to consider granting approval to block the streets for us.
Okay. Chief, you got a copy of the route?
And this would be on what day of the week?
It would be a Saturday.
A Saturday. And it would start at what time?
We're not sure on times yet. We have another meeting coming up, October 20th, at the library.
Okay.
To figure out times.
Chief, we have a suggestion as to what would be good times to, to try and target in order to not run into traffic issues in different places?
Looking at your map, I'm really kind of trying to pay close attention. You're going to, on Saturday, we found this because the school did their run.
Mm-hmm.
They had a run through town, which we don't block a lot of streets, but they had a lot of volunteers watching traffic, and that was probably well-run this year because they had so many volunteers watching traffic, because the police don't have enough people for the size of this course.
I don't think we have enough barricades.
We don't have enough barricades to block it. The other thing we have to keep in mind, just, not that we can't do it, but a lot of times what works well is trying to at least get some assistance by fellow students at school to help with the traffic control, because we can give you the right-of-way, but in the middle of the morning on a Saturday downtown, it worked out for the run, but they started, there's what, they had a 9 o'clock run somewhere. I think that's when they started their 5K, which worked out well because you weren't in the middle of the day, but I know you want to try to draw attention.
Right.
To the cause, so if you can possibly think about getting a group to help you and help us, because with this course is similar to the 5K walk. I mean, there's some shortcuts that you're taking, but to go through the center of town on a Saturday mid-afternoon is, you're, you're kind of going to be walking right in the middle of the traffic time.
Right.
So, we can give some right-of-way, but the downtown area, once you get out of the downtown area, it's kind of state to the right, and we'll have some people in areas of intersections that are kind of dangerous. Anytime you get on West Street, I mean, you can see, that can be ideal, but the 5K run worked well because they did have some volunteers that helped at locations that were concerned about traffic be there and give your group the right-of-way. And if you can make that in a half hour, I think your group should be in the 5K next year. That's a pretty good pace. I think that's a power walking, but I'll, I'll give you the benefit of the doubt.
Yeah, it's a rough draft right now. It's only because we're just starting off, so everything's really sketchy right now, but I was going to suggest if I could come back to the next board meeting.
Sure.
With another layout and more times so that I can have a complete schedule for you guys.
Good. Carly, that would be a great idea, and I think per the chief's suggestion, if you can talk to the folks, who ran that for the high school?
Was it music and the athletic department?
Okay.
I mean. Talk to them.
You talked to, I think, it was the music athletic, but the, Mr. Moffick could direct you, one of the coaches, because they, I mean, they had a tremendous amount of runners for the 5K, and, and they had a lot of students helping that weren't running just be at locations, and that may offer, number one, growth to the cause and get them involved, and then also help with some traffic, and even parents of people could help out that day. Just a couple of key locations to make sure that we don't have any people sneak up on you from behind.
Right.
Especially if they're in a car.
Yeah, I don't want that.
No, we prefer not to have it, and, you know, it works out well. I mean, the 5K, and that was spread out probably about an hour and 15-minute timeframe because, by the time they all, people walked it or rabbits ran it.
Right.
But, you know, we'll work with you, and you've got plenty of time.
Right.
I mean, you're talking April next year, which is more than most people on planning.
Yes.
We're happy to have you. Usually sometimes we get that day before notice.
Oh, no.
Or next week, no. Oh, the Saturday, so.
Okay, so, yeah, come on back, and you can talk to the chief anytime. Talk to the folks at the high school that did that, that run. Get some ideas from them, and we'll work with you as, as the time approaches. I think initially what you're looking for is, you know, is a basic okay, and I think, unless any of the board members want to speak otherwise, I think you've got a consensus of we'll be okay. of, we'll be okay with this, let's just work out the details, if we have all the details down, then we'll put an official vote on it. Thereby, everybody knows exactly what's been approved, okay?
Yeah, sounds good, thank you.
Thank you, Carly. And other family members?
Nobody with me tonight.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the appointment of an alternate commissioner to the Tri-Town Governmental Access Commission. Last week I nominated, or last meeting, I nominated Randy O'Connell to be the commissioner for the new commission, the Tri-Town Government Access Channel Commission between the three towns of Piattone, Beecher and, Beecher and Moni, thank you, that's kind of like, what's the third one? I would like to nominate at this time for the alternate commissioner position, Mr. Jeff Carlson, who lives at 200 Southwest Street. Mr. Carlson has lived in Piattone over 23 years and owns CCT Scientific Equipment Supply, which is located at 514 South Third Street in Piattone. He is a Comcast subscriber and watches the local access channel as time permits. He also is enthusiastic about participating in this event, or on this commission. So, having said that, I nominate Jeff Carlson of 200 Southwest Street to be the Piattone Alternate Commissioner on the Tri-Town Government Access Channel Commission. God, that's a mouthful. Is, I, I'm nominating, therefore I need motion to-
I make a motion, we accept the nomination.
Okay.
I'll second it.
Motion by Trustee Wicker, seconded by Trustee Riker. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
And Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Okay. Carlson has thereby been appointed as the alternate commissioner to that commission. Moving on now, the way we have the ordinance amending the building code relative to owner occupant's scope of work. Where'd you want to do one? Easy to get all these pieces of paper shuffled around.
Pursuit to comment from the board, the last committee of the whole meeting, staff has prepared an amendment to the building code permitting owner occupants to perform all work on their principal residence. Staff has conducted research from other communities, state code and the village attorney. Several communities allow the owner occupant to perform all the work on their principal dwelling. Many require retaining the house as the principal dwelling for a period of time after project completions, typically six to 12 months. State plumbing code permits owner occupants to do their own plumbing work provided the owners maintain the house as their principal dwelling for at least six months. Some communities require the homeowner to provide proof of additional insurance. It does not appear that permitting the owner occupant of a single-family detached dwelling to do all of the work on his or her principal residence exposes the village to additional liability, is that?
That is correct.
Okay. However, liability may accrue to the property owner. The text of the change reads as follows. Owner occupants of a single-family detached dwellings applying to build their own home or perform any work on their principal residence requiring a permit under this chapter, which is the building code, may perform any and all work designated under the permit and need not be registered with the village as a contractor subject to the following provisions. One, for purposes of this section, the term owner occupant is defined as the current owner of the property wherein the property under permit is his/her principal residence. And two, tenants, landlords and their employees are not considered owner occupants and are not recognized as such under this section. And three, the property owner submits a fully executed affidavit of occupancy and use stating he or she currently uses and will continue to use the property as his/her principal residence for a period of at least 12 consecutive months following the certificate of occupancy. And four, not all non-family members receiving pay-for work conducted under the permit must be registered as contractors to the village and listed on the permit application. And five, the owner occupant is still required to obtain all necessary permits, comply with all applicable village and building codes and comply with all inspection requirements. Proposed ordinance, before I go any further, Village Attorney Barley, did you have any comments on this?
Yes, my only comment was just a simple alteration where it says in section three, "and will continue to use the property" and "intends to continue to use the property" rather than "will continue." In other words, that is their intention.
Proposed ordinance attempts to provide direction on several questions that sometimes accompany owner occupant policies. Owner occupant is required to maintain the property for a period of 12 consecutive months, dated from the issuance of a CO. This requirement ensures the owner bears the immediate exposure to any substandard work, basically it's a one-year warrant. However, the village is not always aware of sales transactions, which means that may be difficult to enforce. Tenants, landlords or their employees are not considered owner occupants. The ordinance stipulates that not all, non, let me start that again. The ordinance stipulates that all non-family members receiving pay for work on the project must be registered contractors. However, with part-time building inspectors, enforcement will be a challenge. The owner occupant is still required to obtain building permits, comply with village and state code and pass all inspection requirements. And you have a copy of proposed ordinance, and you have a copy of an affidavit of occupancy and use whereby the owner occupant acknowledges basically the text of the proposed amendment, as well as, one, that he or she must provide direct onsite supervision of the work, and two, that they may have exposure to costs resulting from accident injury by persons working on the project, and that my homeowner's insurance may not provide coverage for those injuries. And two, the use of non-registered contractors in violation of building code may result in stop work orders, revocation of permit and/or penalties by stipulated by village code. And open for comments and suggestions or action or whatever.
I like the ordinance as drafted. One thing that I might want to see, or it might already be accounted for, is that if a false affidavit is submitted, or the, it turns out that non-family members are in fact paid for work, that there be some sort of penalty incorporated for that false affidavit or violation?
The only penalty that would be in place at this point in time would be the standard violation of this chapter penalty, which is $25 a day to $750 a day per day.
So that's implied in here, it's already built in?
This is part of that chapter.
Okay.
Would that cover also the affidavit?
Yes, I'll take a look to see if we might want to add another statement, but yes, it would. They would have to comply because the ordinance is requiring the affidavit. I believe it is.
Yes, the property owner submits fully executed-
It's a true affidavit.
Yes, okay. Does that address your question, Trustee Callahan?
Okay. One of the things I noted as we went through this prior to this meeting, to make sure that the affidavit of occupancy and use, the, I think we outlined pretty easily to anyone who would request this, what their responsibilities are and what their potential liabilities are, or other things that they need to be aware of that they might not think they need to be aware of. Like the direct onsite supervision, the exposure to costs resulting from injury and so on. I think the due diligence of the village administrator and some other folks within the village government have made this more friendly to folks who would like to do, who have the ability and can do the work, and it brings it in line with many other communities in the area that have similar things. So, this would be-
Other comments from, I suppose one more thing, just looking at the affidavit. Maybe if we added to this draft some of that language, that providing a false affidavit or otherwise violating the ordinance would result in a fine, just a casual reminder to the person who's signing the document that-
Okay. That can be added-
Yeah.
-and incorporated into any motion for adoption tonight. Okay? So we'll get that wording placed in there. And any other comments, trustees?
Is it okay if I just, the language in number three?
Yeah, on the affidavit.
Yeah, the use of non-registered contractors in violation of building code or providing a false affidavit may result, is that a good fit? Trustee Callahan, is that kind of where you're at?
Stop work, revocation or penalties.
Yeah, I think that addition would be sufficient, yeah.
Yeah, that keeps it simplified, too. All right, anything else, trustees? This would be ordinance 12-20. Official title is ordinance amending sections 157.076D to chapter 150 of the building regulations of title 15 of the Code of Piattone. God, that's a mouthful. So, is there a motion to amend, adopt ordinance 12-20, amending the sections as outlined here with the notations we just made in our discussion?
Motion.
Motion by Trustee Callahan, seconded by Trustee Huffke to approve ordinance 12-20 and ordinance amending sections 157.076D to chapter 150 of the building regulations of title 15 of the Code of Piattone. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries, ordinance adopted. Somebody can go home and go to sleep now, right?
I can do some more, just again.
All right. Next item on the agenda is the Chamber of Commerce requesting permission for the hot dog roast that they normally have, and on October 31st, and this year, they're gonna be holding it at the Piattone Park District, as we will note that. So, beyond that, is there anybody from the chamber? Beyond that, yeah, well, it's an open burn because they're roasting hot dogs. So, do I have a motion to grant permission to the Chamber of Commerce for their hot dog roast and open burn on October 31st, 2012, not 13, as it noted in the order, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM at the Piattone Park?
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Trustee Huffke, seconded by Trustee Riker to grant permission to the Chamber for the open burn hot dog roast at the park. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Callahan.
Yes.
Okay, motion officially approved. Next item on the agenda is questions of the press. Okay, following that, all we have is correspondence, communications and petitions, and note relative to leaf collection and branch pickup, you want to do that one, Josh?
Sure. The village is transitioning from brush pickup to leaf collection. Weeks of October 15th, the north side, and October 22nd, the south side will be the last route of brush collection. The village will begin collecting leaves October 15th and finish, weather permitting, the week beginning December 3rd. You cannot pick up leaves behind mailboxes, trees or parked cars. Leaves must be in the parkway Monday at 8:00 AM to ensure pickup that week. If you need additional information, more guidelines, you can go to villageofpiattone.com, click on residents and then branches and leaves.
And this is, this continues the program that we started, like, four years ago, I think, or five, where because of the number of staff members we have, we can't do branch pickup in addition to this, so branch pickup officially ends as noted, and the leaf pickup goes until we can get them picked up. We ask that the residents get their leaves out there on Monday, even though the leaves may not be picked up until Tuesday or Wednesday, a lot depends on weather, and, but if you can get them, most people usually use the weekend to do that kind of work anyhow. So, that's a heads up on that. We have completed our agenda. There is, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Motion by Trustee Riker, seconded by Trustee Wicker to adjourn the October 8th, 2012 village and community board meeting. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mr. Riker.
Yes.
Mr. Wicker.
Yes.
Mr. Huffke.
Yes.
Yes. Meeting officially adjourned.